Twenty twenty, uh, Ms. Talbot roll call please.
Yes, Mr. Borowey.
Present.
Mr. Jink.
Here.
Ms. Nichols?
Here.
Chairman Oris?
Here.
Mr. Sokum?
Here.
Mr. Talbot?
Here.
Mr. Elber?
Here.
And Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum of the town council. Would you like me to read the roll for the Board of Ed?
Yeah, if you don't mind. I know it, it, we don't need necessarily, but it is gonna be the first item on our agenda as we go into executive session. You might as well.
Sure. Um, excuse me one second. Um, Mr. Martelli?
Here.
Ms. Harrigan?
Here.
Chairman Perigini?
Here.
Ms. Hamm?
Here.
Ms. Howland? Mr. White?
Here.
And Mr. Grippa has joined us. So there's also a quorum of the Board of Ed.
Okay, great. Uh, if we can please rise for the Fudge Allegiance. Fudge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America. To the Republic.
The Republic.
Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Justice for all.
Okay, the, uh, first item we're gonna have tonight is the personnel negotiations in the executive session jointly with the Board of Education. So I would like to have a motion to go into executive session to discuss these personnel negotiations with the Board of Ed members who are here.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, just, I think I got a name who we're gonna be.
Yep.
Town manager, assistant town manager. Um, Sean, who else on our side do you want in this?
Um, yeah, both Lou and Arnett, uh, should be in there.
Okay.
Jim concerned the joint neither.
Yep, we have Lou, uh, Zulo, and Arnett, and you, Sean, and then on the Board of Ed side, uh, Superintendent Solan and Chief Operating Officer Massiana, correct? And then obviously all the Board of Ed. So with that, if I can get a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sokum, second, and the developer. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, we'll go into executive session and then come back out to get into our budget, uh, meeting.
Twenty-eight, nine percent increase in our department budget. Uh, as you'll see, uh, not a lot of movement in, in most of our line items. Um, you know, the one, uh, you know, more significant change is in our payroll line. I have requested an increase, um, with respect to the assistant town manager position as part of a reorganization plan, uh, that I'm trying to implement and I'd like to have funding for with the council's blessing. So, um, there is an increase there, uh, within that salary line. Uh, that's what explains, uh, it's about ten thousand dollars worth of the, uh, of the increase, uh, in that line. Um, otherwise throughout the budget, again, not a lot of change with respect to, um, uh, really any of our lines, um, in any significant manner. So, uh, happy to take any questions or if you wanna move on to the town council or, um, so we have Jim waiting in the waiting room. Hold on one second. Uh, we have the town council budget as well as the, uh, town attorney budget.
Well, um, unless I see anybody with questions about town manager, it's pretty straightforward. Why don't we move on to, uh, uh, town council, which is also straightforward? Looks like two thousand dollars less than we spent this year.
Sure, exactly. So, um, yep, back on page, uh, two, uh, the biggest increase here, and it's really, again, as you, as you referenced compared to this year, what we've experienced with respect to legal notices, um, and I know Arnett could jump in on this, uh, a little bit, but, uh, the rate we are paying for legal notices with the Cheshire Herald, unfortunately, as everyone knows, is up over, over double. I think it's almost three times as high as it used to be. Uh, and we've, we've maintained kind of a steady level, if not more, uh, need to publish legal notices. I always say every time we have ordinance and ordinance reviews, um, uh, the resulting changes have to be published legally. Um, and so that, that's what drives the largest, uh, kinda change of budget to budget, uh, standpoint. Um, that and then, uh, with respect to the secretarial services, clerk of the council, um, again, that's just reflective of the increased number of meetings we've had. School modernization has played a lot into that as well, and we anticipate more of those meetings going forward. So, uh, we're trying to make sure we're properly budgeted for that, uh, from a clerk's standpoint.
All right. Are there questions from council members regarding the, uh, council's budget? All right, seeing none, then let's move on. I just, oh, uh, Mr. Walsh? Yes, Mr. Walsh?
Just, just had a quick question. Is the legal notice, do, do the legal notices have to go into the Cheshire Herald? Is that, or, I mean, I'm assuming the Waterbury paper, Meriden paper, New Haven, are, are they all the same or does it matter or?
The, um, the, actually, the other papers are a little bit more expensive. We've traditionally used the Cheshire Herald because it has been cheaper. Um, we also, as a matter of past practice, have used the Cheshire Herald because it has the widest distribution in town and reaches the most number of residents. So we do that as a courtesy to our residents. Um, but we do occasionally use the other papers.
Okay, thanks.
All right, um, thank you. Seeing no other comments.
David?
David, David.
Yes.
Uh, Arnett, quick question for you on the, um, on that. You know, obviously the Cheshire Herald, its publication, it's, you know, it's, it's distribution is going down. Obviously, it's still higher than probably some of the other, the daily ones. Uh, but question, i- is there any, I mean, the Cheshire Citizen, I, I realize that's a sort of a compilation newspaper. Uh, but is, is there, can that be used for publication at all? Okay, cuz that goes to every, cuz that goes to every house. I was just curious.
Yeah, they, they are, uh, also associated with, um, the Meriden Record Journal.
Right.
And they're a combination. So yes, we do tend, those, those are really the papers that we use. Occasionally, we will go to a Waterbury, the Waterbury paper, the New Haven paper, Hartford Current if we're, but that's for, for employment. Um, but yeah, we do use them as well, and what we'll try to do is use least expensive while we still make sure that we get all our information out to our residents. And with the, with social media and, and our website, we have an opportunity to get information out, but we have statutory requirements for publishing in a paper for now.
I just wasn't sure if the Cheshire Citizen counted as a paper.
Yes.
Uh, for the purposes of, because that gets distributed to all households, uh, and I, so I just wondered, sure, that at least that way, using that, it would get to everybody. But I realized that a lot of people, um, probably just take it and go right into the, uh, recycling bin with it. Thanks.
Yeah, cuz they don't pay for it.
They don't pay for it, exactly.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a subscription paper, so.
Yeah.
We use it in conjunction with the Meriden Record.
The other thing we've explored a little bit, and because the price with legal notices, as you know, is per line or per word really, um, we, it's gotten so expensive frankly, that we've explored, uh, display advertisements as well, while it may not be in the legal, uh, notice section of the paper. Uh, depending on the length of what you're publishing, uh, including when we had to publish, um, I believe, uh, you know, I think it was with the, uh, solid waste ordinance or what. There are certain times you have to publish just the entire length of the ordinance and provisions, the cleanup, uh, post that we did that one time.
Stormwater cleanup.
That's right. So we, it, you know, i- it can be actually beneficial to print it to almost like a PDF, if you will, and display it, uh, as a display ad similar to, um, a furniture company or someone else might do, because you can still publish it and the rates can be a little more competitive now that the rates per word on legal notices have gone just so sky high. So we're, we're trying to get creative, uh, and make sure it gets before the, the, uh, the residents, um, in any way we can. But, um, we know this is a major item. It's, it's a topic, you know, statewide every year, and, and we know it's a big revenue generator from the newspapers, and we appreciate them and the local newspapers as well, but it's very expensive. Um, there are often, every year you'll hear bills at the legislature about whether we can do online, uh, versions of this and, and maybe save some money. But, um, so far, I don't think that's, uh, in, in the foreseeable future.
All right, thank you. Are there other council member questions regarding town? All right, then we will move on to town attorney if we can, because i- I, it's pretty straightforward. It's pretty much level funded, except they had a large requested increase, which you cut back to level funding, and just curious why they requested such a large, uh, increase.
Yeah, I, let's see, Arnett, I know you have the backup for that request, but I think that was just tied to, um, we, you know, we went back and looked historically at what we've actually had to spend. Um, I forget off the top of my head what the requested, uh, variance was, but, um, again, we, we're also, as you know, we're under RFP right now. So we, I did trim it back a little bit from what we initially, um, or what we budgeted last year. Um, again, somewhat optimistic that we'll be able to get, um, some competitive rates as the council deliberates on, on the RFP. Uh, but that's, I know, the largest, uh, change over, over last year. Arnett, and do you have more on the requested, uh, piece?
I'm sorry, the what?
The variance just between what the department requested, um, that we initially had put in for town attorney on page eight.
Oh, sorry, I was on the wrong one.
Well, they, yeah, you, you spent about three thirty, you budgeted three fifty for the current year, and you put it at three forty for next year, but they asked for four forty. So I'm just curious why they asked for such a, is there something they anticipated that we didn't?
Um, they, that was the number they gave us. Um, if there are any, um, lawsuits, then we see a significant increase. Um, but we do ask them for an estimate, and that was the estimate they gave us, and based on past history, Sean picked a, uh, another number that he felt was a little bit more reasonable. We just can't get sued or sue anybody for a year.
Well, or the, a normal amount of litigation as opposed to an exceptional amount, which is what they're budgeting for.
Right.
Right.
That's right. I think, I think that the, really the request came in as almost a little more of a worst case, uh, scenario.
Yeah.
Um, and making sure we had enough to account for, uh, large lawsuits if they came to pass. But, um, but again, we looked historically, and not just at one or two years, we looked at, I think it was a ten-year trend as we were trying to budget, uh, this number. And again, I think we're, I think we're in a good spot there.
All right.
And there is, there is a potential large lawsuit that may come to fruition in the next year or so, I think they were covering. But if we, if we need to spend the money, then we'll find it.
All right, Councilman Elber?
Thank you, and, and Sean, you mentioned obviously the RFP for legal services. We, you know, uh, a- as we look at some of those numbers, what, um, we, obviously, we haven't, we haven't had a chance to really go through them yet, and, uh, and so, but my question is, as you've looked through them, uh, I don't know if you've taken any opportunity to, to think, okay, if, based on the rates that we're getting with current council, if you took some of those numbers, would that have a significant impact on what you're projecting? Is there, uh, you know, obviously, we haven't picked one yet, we haven't seen them, but obviously, you have some quotes in there and comparing to what we pay now versus what we pay for, could, could there be a savings there beyond what you've already put in? Or are you sort of factoring in already into the number you have, the possibility that we may have other opportunities to save money?
Sure. So the number that you have before you in the budget, I, I had put in before we got the responses on the RFP. But having looked through, and again, without a deep, deep dive, uh, we have, uh, gone through each of them and tried to apply some assumptions. Some are a little harder to calculate cuz you have to assume and back out the retainer piece and how much is gonna be covered by retainer versus, um, up to a certain set number of hours. But we've tried to apply some assumptions. Again, some of it's just been pretty, um, rudimentary as we've tried to factor in. But I, I think they're all pretty much in line with what we're budgeting. I'm not seeing anything that would be dramatically, uh, cheaper, uh, or more expensive. So I think I'm comfortable with the three forty for now. I don't, I don't see that going down, um, significantly, uh, unless, uh, in some of the cases, unless our usage went down.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council questions? All right, we have now concluded a review of each department, in some cases in excruciating detail, in all cases with all seriousness of purpose, and, and review with an eye towards what can we save, uh, uh, in terms of dollars, uh, for the residents so that we get the most dollars for, uh, uh, most, most efficiency out of dollars that we are, uh, asking the residents to put up, even if we're asking for a level funded mill rate, which is what our hope is. It's still a lot of money they're asking people to put forward, and we have reviewed that, and I think the town manager and I have gone back and forth, and he's got a, done a good job keeping a list that's on a spreadsheet of items that were, uh, that came up that are possibilities of add-ons or, or reductions as we went through each department. And again, general town government here is where our main focus is at the moment. So Sean, I don't know if you have that ready to, uh, uh.
I do.
Present, so that I, I'd like to get the council's reaction and thoughts. On the left side, as you can see, and you all are familiar with this from last year, the year before possibly, but, um, there we go. Uh, this is the seventeen items, I believe, that have come up in discussions as we went through the departments for potential, uh, review at this point, to decide what we can afford to leave in, what we may need to, uh, try to leave out. Uh, they range from solid waste tip fee, we know, went up about the ten dollars, uh, a ton, so that's budgeted in there. Uh, the last minute public safety request that we had, hazardous waste, uh, I believe, uh, uh, there was a request to consider whether we wanna go back, uh, to the way it was for the, for the increased, uh, customer service aspect. A placeholder for town negotiations and labor, that's a large one that we've been talking about, and that would be, uh, uh, if we were able to get to, uh, a zero increase, that's what the savings would be, and we've talked about that. Um, the, uh, mandatory pension contribution, uh, by spreading it out over the twenty-five years to pay back our, uh, re- contribution that's mandatory is, is gonna actually save us seventy-four thousand dollars. A little later, you'll see the Board of Ed actually pass pay eighty-eight thousand. Um, if we were to leave the police officer vacancy, that's there for a year, that's what, uh, what happened. Uh, page, library page, uh, positions, if that was to be eliminated, um, that would be the savings there. Recreation position eliminated.
Excuse me, how, how, how many positions are that on the page, you know?
Well, there are quite a few of them, just part-time in there, but.
Well, I know that, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Knows what it is?
Yeah, I'd have to look back. Did it six now?
Yeah.
I think it's six pages. They cover, uh, I think ninety-six hours.
That's right.
Six, yeah, six.
Six and ninety-six hours, okay. Thank you.
And then the recreation position that was talked about, uh, just actually last night with the change in, uh, staff organization because of a retirement. The assessor position, the possibility of leaving, uh, the, the one position that's filled right now, uh, leaving that one filled, not the other, or the other way around, cuz one is assistant and one is an acting, uh, at the moment. Uh, the police secretary, uh, savings, there's some changes there. The, um, savings that, uh, we're gonna have from the RWA not having a, uh, increase for the hydrants. The, um, the, uh, public works department have, uh, had offered up that there was some, uh, variety of catch-all expenses that they had in there. Oh, no, I'm sorry, this one's summer labor, uh, and, and some of the construction.
I think it's both, yeah. It was presented as a larger number, and we were just trying to take a, sort of a, a partial piece of it as, uh, as around seventy-five thousand.
And that was offered on his second to last screen that he had on his, uh, press. So again, something that we need to talk about. Uh, the pool subsidy, it's looking like there's the ability to decrease the subsidy necessary for the pool, um, partly with some changes in staffing and, and, uh, positions and all. Um, the next item, town engineer, which we just had late last night, was a discussion. This is the net savings to the town of, um, not having the full-time town engineer and using the engineering consulting services. There will be a like savings in the WPCA, uh, budget, uh, because the, the job was expected to be split, the cost between the enterprise fund and this. And then the medical trust fund for the positions that further up there are cut, that's an estimate of how many of them might take the insurance that were gonna be covered, and that was budgeted, so this could be a savings. Um, we need to wait a little while longer to get April's numbers and, and digest them to see if we can save something in the medical trust fund, uh, uh, for projections for next year. And then, uh, last night, we asked, and I think we've got a few days left to go till we get some numbers up. If summer camp doesn't happen, and, you know, it's probably looking more and more like it may not, what are the dollar savings for that? We've already taken a hit on the revenue loss this fiscal year because they were paid for prior to June thirty, for the most part. And for the most part, the expenses go in the next fiscal year after July one. So we've taken pretty much the savings, uh, already, or the hit, I mean, in the loss of revenue, uh, in this year. And so that's an outstanding number as well. And then if you slide down, we know that, uh, because of the, uh, anticipated, uh, contribution with the, uh, pension, the Board of Ed has an additional eighty-eight thousand dollars they need to spend. And then the, um, the town, general town government is expecting to have a net savings this current fiscal year of two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. That would lapse into, uh, fund balance and then could be spent. And then there's investment income loss. We talked at our very first workshop that, uh, we're just not seeing the numbers, uh, in terms of investment income. Even the sniff is way, way down. So there's just not money that, uh, uh, we're getting in interest rates on the money that we have. And, uh, so that's an expected less interest, uh, that we'll be earning. And then prior year tax levy was pushed off for this current fiscal year, and it would likely be next fiscal year if, uh, it was to happen and the building official offers some additional revenues. So that, those are the items that were, my take, were outstanding, um, uh, and possibilities, uh, to consider. Uh, doesn't mean we can't have others to consider as well, but at the moment, that's what, uh, uh, I, I think is a general summary of what we've got from our seven meetings that we've had reviewing the various departments. Now, I.
May I see the full screen on the, uh, on the left-hand column, please? The total, the grand total column?
On the bottom here?
Yes.
The one million, uh, twenty-nine. Let me know if I need to zoom that in at all. I know it's small print on, on my screen here.
That's fine. Okay, so, so basically.
If you'd like, go ahead.
So the range basically goes from B three, column B three down to and including, uh, the town clerk line?
Uh, let me double check this here.
B thirty-four?
This, so the town subsidy, the town subtotal here is the, the total townside cut that, that these total. That's seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine, uh, thousand dollars. Uh, that's what feeds the rest of this, uh, chart here, which I'm happy to walk through. Though I know there's a lot of numbers on here, but this, we have an analysis of what this would do for our surplus. And again, this isn't assuming any Board of Ed, uh, savings at the moment or any applied towards, or any Board of Ed cut. So this is trying to focus on the town. Um, and then the revenue subtotal here is for those revenue adjustments, um, within that column.
See, when I added up the, um, the grand total, the grand total of one million, oh, twenty-nine, three, three forty-four, when, when I double-checked the worksheet that was submitted to me, the Excel sheet, uh, it started with range, um, started with.
Oh, this cell, yeah, this cell actually, I don't think has been, yeah, I'm not sure this has been updated, cuz that, that cell actually doesn't feed anything on here. Let me make sure that's, yeah, that goes up to.
Okay, so you've got, you've got multiple sheets working together. You got a macro going on here.
The grand total, correct, the grand total here, sorry, is for the nine, is nine forty-six, uh, four forty-four. Um, the rest of, these are the cells that actually inform all of these over here, so that one just hadn't been updated. That's probably from our cutting pacing earlier today, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, cuz I wasn't getting the same number. Okay.
Yep, yeah, these are all, yeah, these are all working, and again, so, but yeah, this, this piece just needed to be updated. The.
Actually, a million twenty-nine, I think.
That's, it's different, yeah.
Yeah, it's a million twenty-nine, three forty-four.
But you're, you're subtracting out the eighty-eight from the Board of Ed's side for pension.
Correct, that they're gonna have to go up in the wrong direction, eighty-eight thousand from the, from the pension piece.
Correct. Oh, okay.
So generally, what we have is, uh, a list of seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars worth of spending reductions that we need to consider and talk about and deliberate about. And, um, you know, the Board of Ed, we haven't gotten too much into that yet, cuz generally, we're trying to keep, we get into more details with the general town government. So this is where, uh, we, we need to come to some kind of conclusion over, over time, uh, by two weeks from tomorrow, and, uh, see what we're interested in, and, and, uh, then that will feed towards the two-point-six million, right very center of the page right now, that we need to get to zero mil, um, if we agree with the revenue, say, the revenue adjustments right under the highlighted box of two sixty-five. That really is money that the general town government is letting lapse into surplus. So now we need two-point-three million, and if we cut out the, uh, seven sixty-nine and add back the eighty-eight for the school board, um, we still need one-point-six million dollars to get to, uh, zero mil increase. But I, I'd like to hear the reactions to, uh, you know, the items, and I know this all just came upon as I, Sean and I were talking as late as, I think it was six oh-five, uh, you know, with some of these, oh, yeah, did we remember this, do we remember that? So it really is a work in progress. But, um, I, I'd like to hear comments about these, uh, potential reductions in expenditures and seeing if anybody says, oh, no, I, I, I really need that to be left in, or why can't we also cut this, or that, that kind of discussion.
David?
Yes, I'm sorry, I can't see faces when we've got this displayed. So, yes, Councilman Elber?
Yep, two things. One, um, i- if I heard you write on item, on line sixteen, town engineer consultant versus town engineer.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the thirty-five thousand. So that thirty-five thousand is really seventy thousand total, if you split it, or is.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I just want, I just wanted to make sure. So it's the thirty-five, so here, thirty-five is in the WPCB budget?
Correct, which is an enterprise fund, so it doesn't affect the tax rate.
No, no, I, I understand. I, I just wanted, but, but the, the resulting, the resulting cost difference is, is about seventy-one thousand dollars to do that.
Right, from, from, that's assuming we budgeted forty-five thousand for a consulting engineer in lieu of, um.
A full-time.
Position that was at a hundred and, yeah, a hundred and sixteen thousand.
Okay. And that was a four-day position? Just to interrupt, that, that's a four-day position?
No, in my budget, it was a five-day position. In, in the budget I presented, it was the full salary. It didn't include medical benefits in what I applied into the budget, but it was budgeted to be a five-day position.
Okay, so none of this, none of the cuts, and I'm sorry to cut you off, Dave, we'll get out in a second. None of the cuts on the general government side reflect things that we're obviously thinking about, like that town engineer, like that electrician, um, going to forty hours. I mean, those are not in there, correct?
The, the water pollution control fund items are not in here. This is the engineer for the town's portion.
Right. Okay.
Tim, the, what, what this is showing is that we hire a consultant rather than a full-time engineer. Either way, it's still significantly more hours than Walt is currently providing us, which is, I don't know, what, twenty hours a month?
Right.
Something like that. And this is essentially what twenty hours a week the consultant was figured into?
I think that's right. I'd have to confirm, but yes, and I think we, um, we do have, uh, I mean, the other piece to mention is that the Walt, right, Walt's position wasn't budgeted in my bu- my budget, budget, because I knew he was planning to retire. So comparing to what was presented, I presented replacing Walt with a full-time town engineer, but we split it between the WPCB. So that's where the savings here is just general government side.
Right, so it's not really, the savings haven't been realized that we might wanna get out of that. That's what you're telling us.
No, Tim, what's happening is they're reducing the re- the request of a full-time on-staff engineer to a outside consultant for approximately twenty hours a week, correct, Sean?
Yeah, that's correct. So in the budget.
Reduction of the budget request.
Gotcha, okay.
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
Sorry to be.
That's correct.
No, 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 it's confusing, cuz we just talked about it last night, so.
Right, yeah.
I'm glad we're talking about it, cuz I think we all need to be very clear, what, what exactly is this?
And last night, we saw the saving, the, in increased expense was gonna be about a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand. Yet you can't, we have to take off of that, the forty-five thousand we're gonna spend for the consult. So now the savings is down in the seventy-thousand-dollar range, and therefore, you split it between the general town government and WPCA. So that's why it's a little confusing, cuz what we saw, we're actually picking up right from last night with the conversation here in the top. Um, it, it looks a little different because he just talked about the overall, uh, additional cost, not divvying it out and not, uh, the replacement of, uh, getting a consultant.
That's correct. Hey, David?
Yes.
Oh, hold on, if I could, sorry, Dave, if I can reclaim the floor here?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, David, yeah.
No problem, so, two, no, so, two things. One is, uh, or I guess go back to my second item is, and I guess I'll start on item number five, since that was sort of my, uh, I think that was my request in there, uh, to talk about this idea of going back to the RWA. Uh, so, uh, just, I wanted to bring that up, if, since, uh, this may be something easy to, to talk about. Uh, I raised it because when we made the switch to the, the cog, there was obviously some consternation on the part of some residents that, uh, you know, this was inconvenient for them, and that we were supposed to see a huge savings, that those savings, although realized, was never as big as it had originally hoped it would be, uh, and now, obviously, we're looking at a, a difference of only about seven thousand dollars. But, and recognize in this, in these times, uh, seven thousand dollars could be, uh, an issue. So I just wanna bring this back up and say, you know, if, if, you know, that seven thousand dollars is seven thousand dollars. So, um, whether we wanna discuss that or not now, or we can talk about it at some point in time. But, uh, I just want, I, I brought it up because there had been some issues, but I haven't heard too many complaints about it recently, and it seems to be working. So, um, I mean, that's something, just seven thousand dollars, we could, we could think about as far as either, you know, putting back in or taking out. Either, either way works, as long as there is some, uh, recycling, uh, availability for the residents, so. I was hoping that number was gonna be closer, something. I was hoping that number was going to be closer, something smaller than seven, so, uh. But, uh, with this number, it's obviously, it's not a huge ticket item, but it's still bigger than, uh, I would like it to be as far as something that we would, uh, consider for, for convenience sake, so, thank you.
So just to be clear, this, we put it in at an additional seven thousand dollars. To go to regional water authority with more convenient access for the public. Is that what you're saying, Dave?
Yeah.
This is taking that out and staying with cog?
Well, I'm, right, I'm, I'm, I'm putting it, I, I brought it up because, yeah, one of the things was, you know, one of the, the benefits to, to the regional water authority is that it's, it's open every Saturday. When you have stuff, you can bring it, uh, you know, you can go down there, whereas staying with the cog, there's only three collections per, per, uh. For reason, per, I think, three collections per year, uh, and you have to travel.
All that, I, I understand that. I just want to make sure what it's showing has this weight switched back to regional water.
Right.
Saving of seven, and so that's an increase of seven thousand dollars.
Correct.
An increase of seven.
Right, from, from the discussion.
Alls I want to confirm is, is that we're adding seven grand, so you have more options at regional water authority. That's all they, right Sean, yes or no?
That, that's one hundred percent right. Yep. These first three are increases, and I know it's confusing because we have the net, but we drive them this way because that's the way we want them to flow with revenues. So these first three are adjustments up to the budget, the rest are reductions to the budget.
I mean, I, I, I can just tell you, David, for seven grand, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna die on this hill. But I can tell you, when you look at the importance of things, if we're offering this service to our constituents. Uh, some way, somehow, to me, that's an added benefit. If we really needed seven grand, I gotta be honest, this would be a place that I would, I would grab it from. Um, but, you know, I'm not gonna die on the hill for seven grand.
Right, I recognize that.
A million bucks or more.
What's that?
We're looking for a lot of money.
Well, no, I get that, but I guess, you know, we're talking about making it a little more convenient for our constituents, which I get that. But when you talk about that in the spirit of some of the other cuts that we're looking at, it just seems to me much less important. I'm sorry, but that's how I feel.
No, I know that, and that's why, that's why I brought it up, because I know that, that was something that I had, uh, raised and discussed. Uh, but, uh, I recognize that that may be something that for the in- the increase in convenience, this may be something that we have to, uh, stay with the cog on.
All right, Mr. Velver anymore? Nope.
No, I'm good.
Lost you or you, okay, uh, Mr. Janks, I think I, uh, heard your voice next.
Yeah, thank you, David. So on the, the summer camp line, do we have any sense right now what our savings would be if we don't have camps?
Yeah, so I've actually been having those conversations as recently as just before this meeting, uh, with John, and I think we'll have a little more clarification the next season. I do know on just the expenditure side, um, it's about eighty-five thousand dollars from what we would need to spend. What I'm trying to nail down right now is to what, uh, David said at the outset, is how much of the, um, revenue is booked in the current year and therefore already assumed to be lost. And we know there's a chunk of that. Um, during some of my most recent conversations, we're looking back to see, uh, there are a number of people that pay. Even right before a camp starts and some other assumption of the right number there. So I don't think it's that full eighty-five thousand. Um, and again, if it is, we just, you need to recognize that we're assuming sort of the inverse of what we experienced this year, that we're able to have full camps next year and all of that. And again, we're gonna have to make a lot of assumptions as we adopt this budget, but, um, with respect to that, we know on the expenditure side, it's about eighty-five thousand dollars. Uh, but I, I wouldn't count that as that full number. I'm trying to get the net number, uh, perhaps half of that depending on how much revenue we actually book that's associated with camps versus those. Pieces of their revenue that come in throughout the year with, with, uh, other leagues, other smaller camps, spring events, things like that. So, um, just don't have a final answer on that yet, but I know on the expenditure side, it's about eighty-five thousand.
Okay.
As we go, I'm sorry, Jim, if I could just jump on that one item while you're talking about it. Um, that's a one-time item that's gonna rebound back on us because we hope we're gonna offer these services pretty quickly back to the kids. So I think it'd be important, Sean, as we're talking about these items from the various council members, that we, we list them as one-time events that are gonna come back. You know, on the next budget, so that we, some of these, you know, we can defer some of these vacancies, you know, for a few years if we need to. But, you know, hopefully the summer camp thing, that's a one-time deal at best. We hope we don't have it at all. But if we can't offer it this year, we're hoping we can certainly offer it next year, and we need to make sure we account for that and we don't have too big of a rebound. So can you just keep track of that for us?
Yeah, sure, we'll do that. We'll.
I'm sorry, Jim.
Yep.
Well, that's fine. The other question I had was on the, um, the retirement town pension adjustment. So is that, should I be looking at that as, um. Instead of, yeah, the, the discussion we had was we had to go from the seven and a half percent down to maybe, what was it, six? I forget what the number was.
Seven.
Seven, no, down to seven.
So that's, that's where that, so instead of changing the seven and a half to seven, that's, we're not gonna do that? Is that what we're, is that what we're suggesting?
No, so what's, this is assuming, this is the adjustment, and I, and I do apologize, this was a little confusing because some of this came in after I had presented my budget. But this is, um, the result of us going back to the actuaries to say. If we need to go to seven and adopt the new mortality tables and all the pieces that we discussed, but we spread that over two years. Um, you'll recall that the board of ed's budget didn't assume any change. I baked into my budget a full reduction to seven percent. The effect of spreading it over two years therefore means while they have to go up on the board of ed side, they don't have to go up quite as much as they would otherwise, and think it's about half instead of. Hundred and sixty thousand, it's at eighty-eight thousand. And on our side, because I budgeted as though we were all moving to seven. In one year, we pick up a little extra saving. That's what the seventy-four thousand is saved on the town side. I hope that's clear. I know it's, it's confusing, but the short version is it gets us to where we need to go.
Reduction of the increase is what essentially is, correct Sean?
Correct, right. I, I, I over-increased, so to speak, that line, um, accounting for what I thought we needed to go all the way to seven percent. Once we saw the full effect, we started asking the question after I produced the budget, is there any chance we could spread this over two years? And that's what we presented to the council, I think at that very first workshop.
Okay.
And I think at the time I said it's about a wash between, on the, on the total taxpayer impact, it's about a wash. Based on what the board of ed budgeted and what I budgeted, and that's kind of what you're seeing in the seventy-four saved, but you do need to increase the board of ed side eighty-eight.
Right, that's good. Uh, my, my only comment is that, boy, that's a big number, one point six million. So that's my comment right now.
Yeah, the only, I mean, again, I'll, I'll point out, I think David said it, but we didn't include, uh, you'll see there's no reductions to the board of ed budget. In fact, all there is is an increase. Um, and there's no. Uh, there's no expected board of ed savings in this chart here. Maybe I can just spend a quick moment on this. This is new to this, uh, spreadsheet from what we did last year. Um, we wanted to show you what our unassigned fund balance was at the beginning of the current fiscal year, that's the eleven point five million. Um, you'll recall that in the last quarterly report, the prior quarterly report, we were projecting a one point two million dollar surplus pre-COVID. Um, which we know we budgeted eight hundred thousand in the assumed. Uh, budget in the following year. So it's really kind of a four hundred thousand dollar surplus. Call that one point two million. Um, this is the savings, the town has identified on the expenditure side, six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. But we know there's the revenue loss in the current year total, including investment income, parking rack and others of four hundred and twenty thousand. But what's not here is the board of ed's projected savings, which we can add right here, but we wanted to kind of focus on the town to start. Um, because then the decision point, of course, is how much of that savings do you apply to the, to the next year budget, which we could fill in over here in column B? Um, but if we just focus on what the town's doing, so to speak, that would result in the fund balance at the end of this year projected at thirteen million, which we then carry right up over here. Hope you can see my cursor when I'm doing this. Um, a fund balance use as we've already planned in the budget, as we do every year, of eight hundred thousand. And then the use of all of that surplus, that surplus is the, the delta between these two. Um, brings us to this, which is still an increase at this point of four hundred thousand to our, uh, fund balance. And, um, so that's, I don't know, just to try to show you overall the impact here. And if we want to fill in the missing pieces, that would be with the board of ed side, and then ultimately what their reductions are as well. Down here at the very bottom, just to stay with that for a second, these cells that I was referring to earlier in column D. Feed adjustments to what I recommended here. So our budget increase. Um, on the town side would be a one point five one percent increase of four hundred ninety-four thousand if we made all of these adjustments on the left. And then again, because we haven't gone further with the education side, at the moment, they've just gone up eighty-eight thousand. So that's a three point one, uh, percent increase.
So. Go ahead. Sure.
Guys, quick, quick question?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Um, is the, the ten and a half percent, is that our, sort of our, our annual target for the fund balance, or is there a range we shoot for?
No, so we have a policy, and we actually, uh, increased it, uh, last year, uh, of, of maintaining a fund balance of at least nine point two five percent. Um. And in, on page one thirty-one of your budget book, you'll see, again, as of March tenth, you'd see the fund balance analysis that kind of walks you through that. Sorry, that's of the, uh, the vertical. The vertical book, the overall book. Page one thirty-one, um, what I'm doing there to come up with ten point five percent. Uh, is just applying that to, um, a percent of the fiscal twenty budget, the hundred and fourteen million dollars. Um. As you'll see on fiscal one, on page one thirty-one, we, I think when we go to actually calculate it, we do it off actuals, uh, for that year. But I didn't want to overstate it by assuming our actuals this year are lower than they used to be.
May I ask a question?
Jim's on the, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
So, go Tim.
Could I, could I be, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, David, for all this, whatever. Okay, Sean, assuming that, um, well, I've forgotten what the cuts, uh, the savings, I should say, are from board of education. But we know they want to encumber, uh, roughly two hundred thousand. So if we remove that, um, I assume that means we're, we're not adding it to their budget. They're just gonna use it this summer, which is part of the new operating budget. But what's left over, if you add that to surplus.
Yep. It's seven forty-seven, seven sixty-one.
So could you just do that? Because that's, because we're, we're just assuming that we're gonna, or I'm assuming we're gonna put that into surplus, they return to the town.
Right, so the surplus that, at their last presentation was, to your point, nine forty-seven, seven sixty-one. So we're not counting that two hundred thousand that we're assuming they're gonna move into the next year. So, yes, to your point, we could do seven forty-seven, seven sixty-one. And Lee, I don't know if I'm blocking this with my cursor or not, but, um. That now flows into here, um, for a projected starting, uh, before we make our budget decisions, uh, fund balance of thirteen point eight oh nine million. Um, so the next decision point, I'm sorry, this, we don't have to fill in here, is how much of, um. I mean, should the council wish to use additional surplus generated therein, what number you'd want, we want to put over here in this column. Uh, so that you'd see kind of what the impact is. But ultimately adding that to it increases the projected fund balance increase from the current year operations to about one point one million.
Right. Just think that's a clearer way to look at it, or am I crazy?
It, it, it is clear. I think I wanted to concentrate on general town government, but it does make sense because.
Well, yeah, but we gotta, we gotta get from one place to the next and it's all together in my book.
So, I mean, in general, then maybe, Sean, we do need to put that number there because if they're saving seven forty-sevens and laps in the surplus. You know, we just apply that back to them for next year. So let's try that. And, uh, so then you're back to the four hundred thousand dollar net gain, and then you're looking at, yeah, I think you have to put it in a couple of places, what I learned today.
Yeah, so if it's, um. If you applied all of that, so now this is applying all of the savings, uh, generated in the current year on both town and board of ed side, net of the revenue loss. Um. This is the, this is the distance you are, point three two mils away from a flat mill rate, nine hundred and nine thousand dollars. Um. And. Let me see if we have any else. Right. And before any adjustments to the board of ed budget.
Okay, so now we take two-thirds of that and slam the bu- board of ed budget, and the third goes back to the town. But that's taken out, that's already counting seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars from the general town government.
Correct.
I didn't say it was gonna be easy.
It is, and then the other thing is it is increasing the fund balance, again, just as opposed to, because we knew we started the year with four hundred thousand, we started the budget process with four hundred thousand projected surplus. There is, there is that piece.
Yeah, well, to be clear, we, we, we had a projected surplus of a million two. We applied eight hundred thousand dollars into this year's budget. So there's a four hundred thousand dollar delta which you see there at the end. And then because of the COVID-related stuff, we've got about another million dollars of savings between the school and the town, which you see up here, correct Sean?
Right, that's, that's correct.
So that, that essentially kind of works to the numbers. The, the problem with looking at this in a one-year scenario is a couple of things. Number one, we really need to look at our debt service too as we make these decisions. Because I'm looking at page, uh, I guess it's one twenty-eight. If you look at our debt service on the, the summary book, I mean, you'll see that over the next few years, our debt service goes up, you know, fairly significantly. I mean, to the tune of almost a million dollars each year. Um, over the prior year. So we can't lose sight of some of these problems that we've got to deal with. So getting back to my point about looking at this over a few years, we can't deplete fund balance. We can't deplete a lot of these things, in my opinion. Because we need to be using some of these excess dollars that we accumulate today to smooth out the issues that we're gonna be dealing with over the next few years. In addition to just COVID-related problems, which as you see here, we, we would be focused on this debt service issue pretty heavily, but we haven't even talked about it yet. But if you look at it, it's over next year's budget, twenty twenty-two goes up seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars over the prior year. The year after that, it goes up eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, and then goes up again nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars over the prior year. Those are significant increases as a result of the water treatment plant. So we can't lose sight of that, folks.
Yep. That's correct.
Mr. Brower?
And, yes, yes, Mr. Walsh.
I, thank you. Uh, yeah, I was, uh, agreeing with Rob on that. This, we also have to remember, we, we have the school modernization. Uh, people meeting and, and that, that could increase it even worse. Um.
It will.
But we're also, but we're, we're also assuming that, that we can get that two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar savings in the town labor adjustment, which. I mean, we, we may be able to, we may not be able to. So if, if we can't get all of that, there, it's gonna put more, it's gonna add that nine hundred and nine, add to that nine hundred and nine. Thousand dollar, uh. Amount that we're gonna have to get, find somewhere else. So, uh, I, I think Tim had mentioned this before, but. The, the electrician that we were talking about last night, was that ever added into the budget, or was that? Um, because was that added into the public works originally? Because that, I don't see that that was deducted from here.
So, no, yeah, the increased hours, uh, so the reason that's not here is because that's not in the general fund, so that's in the enterprise fund.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, we have gone back, I talked to George about that, uh, as recently as today, and I think, yeah, again, I mean, it's the council's prerogative, but I think we're at the point where there's no disagreement. If we'd like to punt on that and just reduce it back out of the WPCB request, that's fine. Um, but it'll, it'll help with the WPCB's budget, as does the alteration if we go with the, um, town engineer, uh, change here. Um, but you won't see that here on this because, again, that's an enterprise fund funded, uh, outside the general fund.
And I have one other question, um, in, in regards to the, the tip fee. Um, I mean, we're, we're, we're kind of obligated to that, obviously, but I mean, is, is that something that really should be discussed about? You know, are we, is, are there other ways, places, there are other ways that we can, uh, go to save some of that money?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we're waiting to, uh, get a response from the current, um, operator of the plant. I know, I think they have five business days to respond, uh, to what the policy board is, uh, offered with the analysis. But they had the supported a lower rate, a little bit lower than, than actually what we're trying to budget here. But I think if you try to budget for what's sort of meeting in the middle of where they are and where the, where the towns are. Um, that's what this seventy thousand dollar increase kind of gets us to, to that higher tip fee.
Are, are they increasing because of the COVID? Is that your feeling, or is it just something that was gonna happen anyway?
No, it's, it's related to the market. I mean, again, it, and, and the way their contract, the way the contract works, uh, is there are these reset points when you do a local market average. Um, and we choose the towns that we think are most adept, and we have a consultant that does it, and they do, or sorry, that are most comparable, uh, and they do the same. Um. But, you know, and so we pick, again, those that I think are, are most favorable, and then when the rates are, uh, hopefully gonna line up. But really, we know that we weren't gonna be able to pick the eight dollars a ton. Uh, the market anywhere in Connecticut is nowhere near that low. So you go up, we had an increase built into this budget. It looks like it's gotta go even higher. Um, I'm hoping it stays under a hundred. And again, I think that we're, we're quickly to the point, uh, and this will be a discussion that I think Solid Waste Committee will want to have. No matter what we end up having to budget here, we may have some decision points soon in terms of what we want to do long-term with respect to the Wallingford, uh, policy group and, and that. policy group and, and that, that regional operating of that plant, so.
Okay, thanks.
Are there other council member questions or comments?
I guess I do have a question then, because Rob, you threw out that, that point you were making about the, the debt service, which obviously makes a lot of sense. But, but we, we do have to delve into how we're going to get this budget really to zero. So I guess my question becomes, is, is the sense in the room, we don't want to rely on X amount of surplus? So we have to just look at hard cuts in a total number that we're going to divide by for BOE and a third for the town? I think that's sort of what's going to drive this conversation, how much fund balance we're going to use regardless of what happens next year. Am I wrong on that? I mean, help me with this.
No, that's right. Any fund balance that's used at all has to be made up next year. And again, and it's not necessarily going to be made up in having a big surplus here, like it was this year. I, at the moment, I'm in favor of using the eight hundred thousand dollars like the town manager had recommended, because that was out of one point two million, so it was two thirds of it. And I am in favor of using the combined million dollars under expended by the various departments, the two hundred and sixty-five thousand and the seven forty-seven.
Which gets us to the nine oh nine, five oh one, that we now have to say is cut somewhere. So if we just do the simple normal formula, point six seven gets cut out of the Board of Ed, and the rest gets cut out of the town side.
I, I have to disagree with you on that. I have to say that the general town government already has seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars cut out of it.
Okay, and that's right, you're right, because I lost, well, you know, I'm being an idiot. No, I see it now completely. We haven't recognized a cut to their, to their budget. You're correct. We've recognized savings, which I put into surplus, you know, we put into surplus. You're, you're completely correct. A hundred percent of that goes to BOE. Okay, fine.
Well, I, yeah, I'm not saying that.
No, 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 but you're right. I, I made a mistake in my, in my mental transition here. I'm just admitting that.
Tim, though, is, is if you're looking to allocate the cost savings equally, or prorata-wise, not equally, we're about, with the savings you see in this left column, we're about where we would need to be ratio-wise.
Right.
Assuming we agreed all these, and then the Board of Ed would have to come up with roughly a million five fifty-nine, if that's how we want to do it, without using any additional fund balance. And I, I don't think we should go into the fund balance much for this conversation. I think we need to be finding a way to use some of those dollars, and maybe wherever else we're going to come up with some dollars to begin smoothing this multi-year problem that I keep talking about. Because, you know, we're so focused on this one year, but we're creating a bigger problem for us in that second year, and we can't lose sight of that.
Right, yeah. Next year is two point five.
Fact that we're going to have a lot of these one-time expenses, which are going to rebound back at us, then we're going to have an increase in debt service by almost another million dollars. God only knows what other issues may strike. We may have this, the state of Connecticut all of a sudden decide they can't fund us the way they do. This could really be catastrophic in that second year. So we've got to pay attention to the, the bigger picture and not lose sight of.
Well, and to your point exactly, Rob, we, we are going to have a hole of, of one point eight million dollars just in surplus, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in debt service, plus any of the items on the left-sided one-time savings. So we've got a two and a half million dollar hole, or one mil hole, just to start.
And that doesn't assume a lot of the Board of Ed cuts are one-time cuts as well, and that's also going to be added to what you just suggested. So we're digging ourselves a big hole for year two. If we, if we just want to, whatever savings we get, we apply to the first year and we're done, we're going to have a real problem in the year two.
Well, guys, we're approaching eight thirty. I have been scolded for keeping us too late, and I, I fully agree with that. That, you know, last night, I, I didn't realize the labor stuff was going to get so involved and take so long. Certainly, we're not going to come to a decision tonight, but I think this is eye-opening. It was for me when, when Sean, you know, and I have been working on this. I think it is for all of us. I'd like to set down when we can meet next week. I know there are some days that are not available at certain times for certain council members. I know we've got those conventions and things coming up. But I think I'd like to get something going on a night or two for next week, and the following week, we have to adopt. So I think we've got some things to think about. I think we've got some decision points here. You know, I'd like to hear more discussion and more conversation regarding what, what's a go and what's not a go, and the reductions and the add-ons and, and for the various departments, and how much revenue to use from different sources and all that. So I, I think we've got a lot of decision points. I think we've got a lot there to look at. Sean's going to send that out as soon as we fix a couple of things, I imagine. So you're all going to have that to look at and manipulate and all of that. Dave, I see your hand up.
Yep, so just a quick question. Sean, I know this came up in our discussions a couple of weeks ago, but now that the decision has been made to basically keep the rest of the school year on a remote learning situation. How much was, was it forty, fifty thousand dollars or, I think Superintendent Stolen had given us a number. I couldn't remember what it was. How much additional savings was that going to generate, remember? I mean, it wasn't a huge amount.
Yeah, I'd have to look it back in my notes. I know that number that I had, though, on my recollection, and Jim, I think confirmed it was then on Friday, the nine forty-seven, which became seven forty-seven after the two hundred thousand. I think that was already assuming they were closing, they were closing.
For the rest of the school year.
That was, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think there's more coming. I think that's the most recent number that I've seen.
All right, okay, thank you. I just, I just, I, I figured you may have already calculated that in, but I thought I would ask, because I know there was going to be some savings, but I appreciate it.
Yeah, I will, I will say that is the most recent, that's the most recent from the Board of Ed, but I wasn't sure if there was going to be anything above and beyond that.
Well, and we'll get updates as it gets closer, certainly, and let's hope they're in the positive direction. But, Tim, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just had a question. Perhaps it might just help us down the line. If Sean could just sort of fashion something that sort of went to Rob's statement, that if we took basically a million dollars roughly out of their budget because of the Board of Ed side, you know, where that would leave the town next year, including the town side, the holes we need to fill. Because, because basically, we have concerns about something we don't know, except we all can predict the state's going to be in a big mess, and we're probably going to have some reductions in some ECS funding. Even if we get a zero increase on our teachers and all that other stuff next year, it's probably still going to be a big problem. But I think that would help. If we could identify that hole, so we have the, the correct sense of terror.
Sure, yeah, we'll definitely take a stab at.
Because that's what I was getting to, of the listing of the one-time expenses versus the ones that we can recur if we choose to over a course of a few years. That'll get us that number.
Yeah, I know that might be a tough exercise, but that would help me.
Well, we, yeah, we'll do our best at it, and I think, you know, we'll explain the assumptions we make. I think with some, you know, like, take the recreation position proposal. That was perceived as a permanent position elimination. You know, the officer vacancy, you know, perhaps that's one I hope that we will be able to fill again, or assume that we're going to. So I think we'll, we'll, we'll color those maybe in a, in a, in a certain way, such that we can kind of put them in one column versus another column. And if we need to move them, open to, to conversation on that, of course, with your feedback.
Yeah, I don't look at it that way, Sean. I look at any labor positions. I mean, we all may look at that officer and say, okay, it's an absolute requirement. But we're, we're getting by without that officer now. To me, that falls in the category of potentially not a one-time. We, we might be able to get a few years out of that, as I see it. Now, we can debate that as a group, as to whether we need to hire it right away back or not. But I look at that as one that potentially doesn't need to be an immediate rebounding effect. What I'm talking about are utility savings, or things that we know are going to immediately come back after the COVID crisis ends. And I think that's important to us. You know, labor stuff, we can debate whether we think we need it or not. I, I would leave that to us to decide.
All right.
And Dave, I just have things. CNR, I know you listed here, CNR, that the twenty, we were at a million one, twenty-one, we were at a million dollars, but, you know, is, may, and I know the big projects were bonding, so it's probably not that, that relevant. But any of the non-bonded projects in CNR, we, we have to take another look at, just to see if there's any found funds there.
Now, for the current year, they've let about three hundred and sixty thousand lapse into savings, and that's what's adding to the surplus for the current year. For next year, there has been no reduction to the CNR projects. It's left at a million, and, and that's what's there, so.
That, but that's exactly my point.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is, for next year, let's take a look at it and see how important are those projects? And what are the amounts? Can we find some dollars there? You know, we talked about road projects, but I think we're bonding most of the road projects, the paving and such, correct, Jim? Correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
Yeah, because we talked about whether we need to even pave in front of the town hall there, but, but that's going to be a bonded project anyway, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. And Rob, to your point, the page one thirty-nine of the budget has the list of CNR appropriations that make up that million dollars. And so those are the ones that we have to pay with cash through the CNR.
No, I, I mean, I know, Sean, and I, I'm, I'm not looking to add more work, but you know, the problem is, we have all these books, and with all due respect, for us to have to, at least for me, maybe I'm slower than most, but for me to rummage through all these books to try to pull this stuff back together is sometimes difficult. So I think when we're asking for some of these summary items at the end of this process, if you can kind of create a new sheet for us, at least for me, I'm kind of putting them up next to each other and trying to make some decisions, rather than trying to fumble through the books and find them myself. I, I apologize, but I personally just don't have any more time that I'm already putting in, like a lot of us, to have to rummage through all these books and try to figure out where everything was that I saw six weeks ago, so.
Sure, yeah, so we can make it, we'll, we'll, we'll convert that into a list and, and add it to the spreadsheet that we email her.
Are there other questions or comment? All right, so let's figure out next week what works for people. See, I don't know if the best way is maybe our net, you can send out an email tonight or tomorrow, tomorrow, and find out what days work best next week. I prefer an early in the weekday, so it still gives us the ability to have a late in the weekday as well for a meeting. And see if we can get a couple of meetings on the books for next week. Yes, David?
I was using my, my, the list we had, had the nineteenth and the twenty-first as possible dates. Are those, no, are those up, are those sort of up for discussion, or?
No, I. I think the twenty-first, I thought the twenty-first, there were conflicts. Am I misremembering that? No. Or maybe it's the nineteenth. Tomorrow, there were conflicts.
Right, and the nineteenth, I was told, there's some conflicts. But that may be earlier conflicts as opposed to later, so maybe we could do a, or we could meet Monday.
I know I have, I know I have a, a, a meeting at six thirty that you had mentioned, it was a convention, but that should be done by seven. So if, if maybe even for the, even for next week, or on the, on the nineteenth, if, if we push this to seven o'clock instead of starting at six thirty, I think that would pretty, that would pretty much get everyone through whatever conflicts they have on the nineteenth, unless, unless there's other personal conflicts. But if it has to do with, you know, conventions and stuff, tho- those should be quick.
All right, then why don't we keep with that schedule? We'll just make it a seven o'clock on the, on the nineteenth, and then figure the usual six thirty back for the twenty-first, if that works.
Perfect.
Actually, Tim, you and I have a conflict on the twenty-first.
We do?
Yes, the monthly meeting of the RWA.
Oh.
Is that night.
Okay.
But the nineteenth is, is still good.
Okay. Is twentieth school modernization?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
The third Wednesday, yeah.
Yep, okay. And we can't do Monday for some reason?
I, we could do Monday. Is Monday all right with everybody?
You got time, Sean? You can get everything for us?
All right, Rob, did you have a comment or question?
No, I was just saying, we're meeting, many of us are meeting on every night of the week anyway, on some committee or not, so.
Yeah.
Keep the ball rolling. Let's have at it, add another night.
Well, so if we did Monday and Tuesday, that would mean Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday for those with the school modernization, which is a lot. Is that all right?
But if you did it Thursday, the same thing, doesn't matter.
I mean, we kind of got to do what we got to do, Dave. I, I know we're all, we're all getting tired. And, and this process with the teleconference is just not as effective as it is in person. It's tough, I know. I can see grading on all of us, and you know, it's, it's not as simple a way to do it, but it is what it is. We've got to do it. So I, I'm saying, I, I'm okay with doing whatever you got to do, and we'll make ourselves available. The only question I have, Dave Velver, is I'm also going to be at that convention thing on, on Tuesday. Are you sure a half hour is going to be enough for us?
Well, I have, mine is, there's different, there's multiple different conventions. You, you may be at a different one than I am. I'm for the hundred and third.
I'm going to look at it then. So I, I may have a conflict on Tuesday at seven o'clock, depending on the time of my convention, because it may be different days. I'll have to look, but.
Yeah, look, look at the time.
Joining whenever I can.
Yeah, look and see what the time is. And if, if it's not going to work, it's not going to work. But let's plan on Monday at six thirty. We'll get as much done as we can in terms of discussions and stuff in a couple of hours, and we'll potentially have Tuesday maybe with a little later start.
Okay.
And then the following week, we've got to keep our schedules open as much as possible.
You know that spreadsheet that we always put up on the board in the room there? Do we, do we have that? You know, the decision-making spreadsheet that we always do kind of towards the end of our budget process, where if this, then we see it all kind of manipulate? This, this isn't quite that. Do we have that?
This is, I think, a different version of that one. But it doesn't have the exact, I know what you're talking about. You're talking about the one with the exact mil rate and where we are and what the.
The mil rate. Percentages.
See, this year, because we're trying to, or you've said, let's go with a, a zero mil increase, you don't, you don't have that sliding scale of a, of a mil rate anymore. You've got a number set in stone, and here's what you've got to do to get there.
No, I know that, but again, maybe I'm simpler than everybody else, but it's just that spreadsheet seems to show it better to me than what, what I'm looking at right now. It's just, it seems to be simpler. So may, maybe there's no way to add it, but I'm just trying to figure out, can we, could, I get what you're saying, because we're not manipulating the mil rate. And we're trying to keep it the same. Well, we are, because we're going to go from where the current budget is, which is a mil rate, basically a full mil increase, and we're working it back down to where it currently is. So, you know, I, I just, for me, I'm just throwing it out there as a question. For those of us that have used that other format, I found that format to be a lot easier to kind of digest and read. And this is a little more difficult for me. So I'm just curious, can we, can we create that or no?
Sean, can you add that back in? That was taken out for space purposes on that spreadsheet, but can you add that back in, that middle center?
Yeah, sure, we can, yeah, we can definitely add that piece of it back in. I mean, the, the calculator, if you're looking for the mil rate being generated by what's already been assumed in, in those columns, that all is dynamic in this spreadsheet. And certainly, maybe when folks can play with it, 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 it's calculating in real time what the mil rate would be if you didn't go any further down to the target.
So maybe, I think, and I'm sorry to hold everybody up, but for me, this is important, because we're getting down to crunch time. And we're all going to have to independently spend some time with our books and figure out where we need to be going. And for me, if I have a way to have that up on my screen, and I can manipulate the numbers myself, you know, before I get to a meeting, is that something that you can provide for us, Sean? Is that something like?
Sure, oh, yeah, I'm, yeah, sure, Jim.
Yeah, I, I can work on that tomorrow and try to get something out for you tomorrow on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you're going to send us out the spreadsheet that, that we were working off tonight, correct?
We, yeah, we got it. We got it.
So, so why, can you just add a tab then that gives Rob the spreadsheet that he's looking for is, is a separate tab?
I think it's there.
Sure, yeah, there's, I want to verify that.
Because our screens are small, you can't really see everything the way we normally would see it. So you kind of, kind of work your way through the different pages. Yeah, so, anyway, I'll figure it out, guys. I'm sorry to belabor this. But I know over the next, over the next week, we're all going to be working hard after these meetings, trying to figure out, okay, how do we slice and dice this thing? And because we're going to all have to do some work before we get to our next meeting again.
Rob, I, I agree with you. It'd be really, it's really nice to be able to see this and really digest it on our own. I mean, it's tough to see it at this meeting and digest it while you're looking at your computer screen and, you know, and this, even as Sylvia mentioned, I, sometimes. of this, you know, uh, and this, even as Sylvia mentioned, I, sometimes it's nice to be able just to look at it and curl up with it and really have a chance to, to look at it rather than try to do all that, do try to do all that calculation on a, on a screen, an Excel sheet on, on a, so. Yeah. And, and we're all going to have to spend some time on our own, looking at some of this stuff. And so Rob, I think it's really important that we get that information in a nice, uh, way that we can look at it and slice and dice it ourselves. So we can all come back with our own individual ideas on how this is going to work. So thanks for bringing that up, Rob.
Uh, somehow that vision of curling up with the budget thing would sound very enticing to me, but otherwise I.
Sadly though, that's the life we lead and we get paid so well for it, but, uh, we all lead that life. This is what we're running up for folks. Curling up with our budget books.
I've been waiting for my first paycheck. When does that come?
Yeah.
Keep waiting.
Well, and, and I also noticed apparently, uh, I got to get working this weekend. I'm putting up my, uh, my 325th year sign, uh, my banner on the wall. It seemed, uh, seems slowly but surely they're going up on everyone's wall. So.
You know, it's the only way we can really display them and, and kind of show our support for the community. So we, it's nice to have them. Let's display them a little bit. This is the only way we could do it at this point.
Absolutely. I'm looking, I'm looking at the space over my head. I'm going, I can put that up over there.
Mine's down there next to all the posters of all the, uh, all the local groups that are good. So that's in the other room.
Mine, mine is at my office that does not double as my kitchen.
Yeah. Uh, Arnat, you had a?
I just have a quick question. Can I verify that you want a special meeting on May 28th, Thursday, May 28th for adoption?
I, I think we ought to make sure that we have, we're probably going to need every bit of the next two weeks to solve this. So I think yes, let's have the adoption on the last day that we possibly can.
All right.
And if we can do it sooner.
Folks, because I think we got a long way to go. And as, uh, Smokey and the Bandit said, in a short time to get there. And boy, I'm, I'm nervous about this one because it has such far-reaching implications for the next few years in my opinion. And we just got to try to get this right for so many reasons.
Rob, Rob, can I ask just really quickly, just because we have everyone together to confirm, just looking back that this is the document that you're looking for? I don't know. Can you see, this is what?
The problem, Sean, is, uh, yeah, that's, that's.
Too hard to see.
Yes. I, I mean, that generally looks like it. I can't see the whole thing because maybe I have a smaller screen than everyone else.
That looks like it.
Sure.
That looks like it. Yes.
That is, that is, that's what he's talking about.
Okay. Well, it is. All right. So we'll, we'll, uh, we'll send out the Excel spreadsheet tonight. It, it is included. That piece of it is on tab two already. Um, but I, I think the other piece, if you're like, here's the, the one we were talking about. That piece is here on tab two as an updated calculation of the mil rate comparison. But the proposed list of expenditures and revenues, um, has been supplanted with this list here of expenditures and revenues. So, um, again, we'll certainly, uh, no, no problem. We'll re, we'll, we'll create the, the same one before. But I just wanted to, to see if it was this piece of it or if it was the listing, um, from before.
Sean, if, if we, I didn't, I didn't look at the other tabs. So that's, I mean, I know we got some of this stuff right before we came on tonight. So.
Right. It hasn't even been sent really.
I'm going to look for you to add work to it. My question is, will it convert from one tab to the next if we make some manipulation of it?
Sure. Those first two tabs do. And what I'll do is maybe, maybe I'll, I'll play with it to see if that's an easier way to, to keep one document updated. But also it's no problem at all. Jim can certainly update. It, we have a version of it already pretty much ready. We, within a few hours, we can have that up.
Well, I don't want to work, I don't want to change the one you're working off of. I just want one that I can play with myself. That as I put some thoughts in, that I see what the impacts are. That's all I want. I don't want to change your standard one or your master one. I just want one that I can.
Right. Sure.
So can I do that with the email that you sent?
Yeah. Well, I'm going to send an updated one because we did see that formula error, but I'm going to send an updated one to everyone right after this. And I'll highlight the parts that exactly you can manipulate and try it. And we'll see if that works. If it doesn't, we'll, we'll send the other one out as well.
Thank you, Sean. I don't mean to be a pain, but that would help me immensely.
No, no, no. Now, we, we want to make it as easy as possible. That's in all of our interests. So that's not a problem at all.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts on this? I'm sure we all, I got a raging headache because I'm sure many of you all do. Um, if we have nothing else, I would love to, uh, call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move. Thank you, Mr. Slocum.
Second.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Jinxall in favor.
Hi.
Good night, everybody. And listen, enjoy curling up with those budget books tonight, folks.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Good night.